Standards Committee, I am councillor Tim Huggan and I am chair for today's meeting. The meeting will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. The meeting today is open to the public. Please may request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the town hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. We will now move to quickly introduce everyone in the room. Can I please ask members to introduce themselves? Shall I head that way?
Councillor Gareth Slater, Southey Wood.
Councillor Matt Dyer, Burley Wood.
Laura Munahan, councillor for Manor Castle.
Linda Hunter, senior finance manager, internal audit and risk management.
Leon Kaplan, information management officer.
Councillor Sarah Fox, Manor Castle.
Ashen, independent corp.
Ursula Marikan, independent corporate member.
Philippa Bedet, democratic services.
David Hollis, general counsel.
Philip Gregory, director of finance.
Thank you for that. I understand that Marouf Ralph is likely to be a few minutes late, so he will hopefully be in attendance later on in the meeting. Thank you. There are no apologies for absence. There are no items that require the exclusion of the press and public today. An item three, item four, declarations of interest. Do any members wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda? For all your peace. We'll move on to item five, which is minutes of the previous meeting. Can members approve the correct record minutes of the meeting held on the 18th of September two, twenty twenty five? Okay, fantastic. Move on to that, so that's good. And we'll move on to item six, internal audit annual report twenty twenty four, twenty five. Presenting the officer is Linda Hunter. I'll hand over to you, Linda.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just going to talk you through the annual report. And the report highlights to members the work undertaken by audit for twenty four, twenty five. And it also gives my audit opinion and supports the AGS. I'm going to emphasise some key paragraphs within the report. But I just want to highlight first that sufficient work has been carried out by audit. And we've also placed some assurance on the work of external audit, Ofsted and the ICO, the Information Commission Officer, Office. Key paragraph, the paragraph thirteen is my opinion. And basically it says, I'm satisfied that risk management, governance and internal control framework are adequate. And I've given it a reasonable, positive opinion, so that is a good opinion. There are three opinions I could give. I could give no assurance. That one's given reasonable assurance, or I could give assurance with some caveats where I've got concerns. So that is the sort of the top opinion I can give. Paragraph nineteen, that highlights the five PIs that we were targeting for. We've achieved four of them in full. The one target that we're slightly down on is the number of planned assurance reviews to be delivered. The target was ninety-one, we've delivered eighty-nine, so we're not far off on that. The key reason for that is because we had a long-term sickness absence within the team, so we've not achieved that one fully. The plan had to be flexible though, so the eighty-nine pieces of work were delivered. Some of them were different to what we planned, the audit, the audit plan that I brought you back in April of twenty four, because it's twenty four, twenty five. But the work has still been productive and it still provided my assurance and it took, goes towards my opinion. Paragraph twenty-nine, which is the breakdown of all the audit activity we've undertaken in each area. You will note there's a number of pieces of work there that are still work in progress, there's ten. Seven of those are what we call a draft report stage. So that is where we've undertaken the full audit, we've undertaken the testing, we've drafted a report, had a discussion meeting. We just haven't finalised the report yet. So that is those, the seven in that ten there, that are the draft report stage. Paragraph thirty-one, that outlines the twenty-four pieces of business partnering work we've done. And then in appendix F, I've given a full list of all the pieces of work that are classed as business partnering. But that work has been well received and basically it's looking at developments, new systems or improvements to work. Paragraph thirty-seven, that highlights the opinion reports that I've issued. So you'll see there, there's two no assurance, eight limited, sixteen moderate and two substantial assurance. The two no assurance reviews, they relate to the excluded pupils audit that we did and then also the PFI expiry planning. And I brought that one to yourselves a couple of months ago. That was in my recommendation tracker. And I know, I think somebody raised it, they wanted an update on where we're at rather than wait until January. We've just done a follow-up audit on that. And pleased to know that all twelve recommendations that we highlighted have been actioned, so that's to a satisfactory standard. So quite a lot of work has been undertaken in that area. Paragraph forty, that highlights our main financial systems work that we've done. And again, there's more detail in appendix D. But again, positive there, the bulk of the main financial systems work we've done. We found the transactions from the transaction testing that there are adequate controls in place there. Paragraphs forty-five to forty-nine, that is an extract from the fraud investigation report that was produced and delivered to you last month. So I won't go into detail about that, but that was presented at the last month to Audit Standards Committee. And then paragraphs fifty-two to sixty-one, that is the professional requirements. So that mentions in there about the global internal audit standards that we have to comply to now. And it also refers to appendix A and appendix B, which I update annually. And that is my internal audit charter and mandate, and then the quality assurance improvement programme. So again, the details are in appendix A and B for those. And then finally, in paragraphs sixty-three to sixty-six, that highlights about the AGS and the five governance issues. Now again, that has been brought to the audit committee as a draft and it will come in as final with the accounts in February twenty-six. So that's the summary there. And again, then the final paragraph is sixty-seven to seventy. That just outlines my opinion that I've mentioned, given the positive assurance opinion. The recommendation is that you note the content of the report and the opinion, and if anybody's got any, any questions.
Take care.
Okay, page seventeen, part thirty-eight, just talking there about the no assurance. Now, you said that the PFI one has been assessed, you've made some, some suggestions and they've been completed. But I wasn't sure about the excluded pupils one, is that done as well? And then the ones that are limited assurance, when will we see that? Are they all the ones that are in, I forgot what you said, draft stage?
Yes, the two no assurance is, one is the PFI that's all been actioned, the other one is excluded pupils. That one, the date for implementation, the last date is October, the end of October twenty-five. So we've just issued the follow-up report asking for an updated position, but we know that some are still ongoing until the end of the month. So that one will be part of my recommendation tracker that comes in January. And yet, you're right, all the limited, the limited assurance ones, the limited high are in my tracker as well, so that'll come to you in, in January. The limited medium are in the appendix, I think it's appendix E. So they're in there just as a summary, yeah. But we follow up all no assurance and limited regardless of what the impact is, so they will all be followed up.
So just before we bring Matt in, that, that is going to come back to report to this committee in January?
Yeah, so the recommendation tracker comes every six months, so the next one is June, January, I think January the eighth.
Okay, thank you for that. Matt?
Cheers, thank you. And so it was on the audit areas that you covered, and it was the adults and strategic enabling services. The number complete against the revised plan seemed quite low for those service areas. And I was just wondering if there was a reason, if it was just resources were moved to other areas of more need? And then on the main financial systems dashboard, the only limited assurance was the payroll overpayments. But that would make tracking timesheet fraud quite difficult if you weren't able to track overpayments and recoup it. And I was just wondering what I...
Sorry, you're upstaged.
Yeah, I've been upstaged. It was, but it was, I wonder if you could speak a bit about that and what work's being done to bring that into line and the impact it could have on timesheet fraud?
Yeah, so you're right. So like you've mentioned, do we use a no plan compared to the revised plan and then what we've completed? We do have to prioritise, we reassess constantly the risks and where the priorities are. So sometimes we do deliver different audits. Sometimes it might be within the, within the directorate, so it might be that we've just changed one adult services review for another. But it can be that sometimes we cross it across directorates. So it just depends where the need is and we just start to be flexible with that as to where we need to prioritise our, our time. And then your point about the payroll, yeah, the payroll overpayments. We have to see naturally, following off from our audit review and issuing the final, final report. In the manager's bulletin, there've just been some reminders to, to staff. So that was basically emphasising, you know, the need to make sure there's a consistent process in place and there is a policy and the need to adhere to it. So that has gone out to try and ensure compliance. They are reviewing the policies as well and the procedures and trying to sort of get that, you know, on people's floor, you know. Put it in front of the managers again, just to remind them of the process to follow. But yeah, that, that audit did pick up some inconsistencies. And also I think HR decided as well they're going to take on some of the roles. So a lot of it was delegated to managers, so they want to just make sure there's some consistency for the time being. So they are going to step in a little bit more and provide more advice. So hopefully that should, but we will be doing a follow-up on that because it's limited, so we'll be able to see the progress in that.
Bruce?
Apologies Chair and everyone else for being late. Can we ask questions about the appendix, sorry? Yeah, so just in regards to appendix A. Is it appendix A? On page... No, it's appendix... Not doing too well here, am I? E, appendix E. So somebody have the key actions arising from the limited assurance, so on page thirty-two onwards. What is, just on the first one, neighbourhood, so parks and countryside, what is the quantified exposure to overspend? In regards to that particular, particular element? What is the quantified exposure to overspend?
I don't know, I'll have to find that out. Because as I said, what the audit, the audit was concentrating on was making sure that it was, A, there was a contract registered, the tender process was followed. And looking at the procurement of contracts within parks and countryside, so I'm not sure what the potential impact would be financially, but I can come back on, on that.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Let once, can he come in?
I can give you an update in terms of the current position in terms of that part of neighbourhood service. So the latest numbers that we published for members was the quarter one figures. Parks, leisure and libraries on their twenty million pound budget were forty-eight thousand pounds overspent.
Thank you. And is that committee aware of that, Sugar?
Yes.
Thank you. Just on the next primary school visits, both of those, we've got a couple of questions about those. So on the first one, in regards to the transactions or, well, what statutory or policy requirements were actually breached? And what corrective actions have been taken to reduce any legal exposure?
We haven't done a follow-up yet, so I don't know what the corrective action has been. However, it is planned to do a follow-up on both of those. However, the, the breach there was about declarations of interest and procurement. So that was what was missing, was there was no declaration of interest. So that should have been actioned, so basically we should expect all governing body and all staff within the school should have declarations of interest updated when we do a follow-up.
Thank you.
That breach there.
Okay. And just in regards to declarations of, of interest. Was, what was the particular issue with the declaration of interest? And was it, was it endemic within the school or was it a lone wolf? Or was it just the fact that there were no, there was no ask of a declaration of interest from any member within that school?
There was a declaration of interest within the school and they did have some declarations of interest. But there was a procurement that went through that did, a member of the governing body had an interest in. So it wasn't declared. So it was challenged, but they didn't think they had to declare it. So the audit brought out a weakness there, saying that you do need to declare any interest that you've got in any company or business, so.
Thank you. And just on the second, the second visit. How is compliance being restored and evidenced?
Again, when we do the follow-up, so basically what we'll do is we'll have the recommendations and we go through every, every, every recommendation and expect whether said yes, it's been actioned, we want the evidence. So we, until we've seen the evidence to support compliance, we won't sign it off that they've actioned all the recommendations. But so both of those school visits, we haven't done the follow-ups yet, but I've...
Do we have a date for the follow-ups?
I think both of those at the end of the year, it's going to be December twenty-five. So if it's in time, I can give you an update on the January twenty-sixth.
Yeah, please, that would be really, really useful. Just one final question on that. I might be reading this wrong, but it seems that both of these schools that were visited have some sort of financial issue. And that if these were the only two schools that were visited and they've both got some sort of financial issue, then clearly there is a problem within the wider sphere. And my question really is, I'm not sure you'll be able to answer this. What are finance doing about this? Greater, a wider financial issue, given that schools complain about not having enough money, yet they can't even track basic payroll anomalies, it seems.
Yeah, these two schools, when we, we do five school visits and like I said, these two have got significant issues there in relation to the finances. We actually do select the audits where within children's services they've got concerns. So the five that we actually selected were schools that, I think four of them had deficit budgets. So they were already aware and working with them. And basically they asked us to go in and do an audit to look at everything financial, rather than just homing in on like schools' improvement plan. So that, to be fair, they knew there was areas of concern and they're working with them. So we were just going in there to, to, to look at anything else as well and just to reassure them that, yeah, that school does need that, that extra support.
Thank you.
Laura?
Linda, could I just ask for a point of clarification there in response to that question? These are local authority primary schools, so the majority of the primary schools are belonging to academy trusts, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
So our, the, the number of schools that we audit is going lower and lower because like I said, a lot of them are...
Yes, that's what I thought, to be very few that we actually control.
Yeah, so we don't actually audit, that's why we only do five now. And then what we do for the others, we do what we call a controlled risk self-assessment. That is where we send out a questionnaire on a certain topic and get twenty, thirty schools to reply back. So yeah, five still get a full visit, yeah.
But the only, the only thing I would say, I can't see anybody else, is that, as Bruce said, if there's two schools you've picked up on, I mean, that have, you've had, are they under school improvement plans? Or whatever the, the board or whatever it is that they sometimes get in? How, how, how soon would it, you know, do we, do we randomly look at schools anyway? Or is it only ones that have flagged up a cause for concern? Because sort of sometimes by the time you get down to a certain route with schools, the, the cause for concern is a lot, is a long way after when some of, some of the systems are not necessarily as robust or as, 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 as they could be. So how, so how far down, is it, is it only ones that we look at further down that line?
No, we can pick up, so the year before we did actually look at some, some of the schools that had significant underspends. You know, so there was overspend, it was an issue, but then there's also red flags as to why there are big, big underspend as well. So we do look at other metrics as well as to how we select them. Also, the, the schools do an annual, schools' financial value standard, they do an annual return. And again, we pick up things from the annual return because we get sight of that, we collate it. So again, sometimes we pick up issues on there that we think, well, actually that's got, you know, alarm bells ringing, let's have a look at that school and put that on the list for, for auditing. So say it can be the financial side or it can be other areas that we think we've got concerns with and have a look at.
So seeing nobody else want to speak, what, what, so we're going to get this come back to us in January, but where else is it going to go? So that they can, you know, which committee, where, where, where does it go to? To make sure that the systems are back in place and that we're confident that either the conflicts of interest, that the financial, where, where does that go to after here or before here and comes back in January? Maruif, quickly.
Yeah, sorry, I've just picked up on one point, if I could ask a question, is that okay, Chair? It's the bit on page thirty, bottom of page thirty-three, top of page thirty-four, appendix E, it's a bit about main financial system payroll. How are you protecting staff confidence in payroll accuracy and fairness during overpayment recovery and policy changes? If at all?
I suspect, like I said, the anomalies we found, the issues that we found were, like I said, it was overpayments, it could be within, like overtime, or it could be timesheet, it could be the, the travel and subsistence, so it could be on a variety of, of areas. It might be, it, it could be errors from input or it could be, you know, deliberate errors. Or also that we've got somewhere that's left, sort of levers, so there was overpayments to levers. So what we've had to do is, that's what's come out in the manager's bulletin, it's reminded to, you know, like for example levers, reminding them to, you know, you must be prompt, letting HR know that you've got a lever coming up, so don't wait until they've gone. It needs to make sure they go through. So I think there is, it's, it's making staff more aware of the consequences of inappropriate processes that leads to an overpayment. So is that what you...
I, I guess, I guess the question really is that it looks like, and maybe I'm, I'm wrong here, but from, from reading that, it seems that there's issues with payroll accuracy. And that's what staff are hearing now after, after this meeting. How, how are we ensuring that moving forward staff can be confident that those inaccuracies are not affecting some members of staff more than others as such and everybody's being treated fairly?
I think everybody will be treated fairly. I think the inaccuracies are from, let's say, it's from the late notification. So for example, like the levers, it's the late notification that somebody's left. So I don't think it's anything deliberate or, you know, deliberate reason as to why somebody hasn't put the process, you know, processed it through as a lever. So I think they are being treated fairly, it's just some managers are quicker at doing that notification than others.
Thank you.
Just say that accurate inaccuracies are going to happen all the time, that's not, that's not, that's not our concern. Our concern are if there are material things that you've picked up and that we are happy that they are being dealt with appropriately. And then they're going to relevant parts of the accounts to, to deal with is, is, is my concern about, is, would be mine, and I hope the rest of the committee's concerned about that. I mean, payroll inaccurate is going to happen all the time, I mean, it's just part of, part of life, isn't it, over, over time? So the only thing is, the question I was asking you about, how, where does this go after this? Which committees, what part of the council deal with it? And then, and then does it after it's being dealt with that way? Does it come back to us in January as part of your, your further report that you're doing to say that this is now, you're, you're more assured of what's happening?
Yeah, so this doesn't go anywhere else, it's basically the, these reports, the limited and the, the no assurance reports will come back on my tracker, so I'm tracking the recommendations. But I'll just mention what we are doing, we mentioned about the deficit schools. We have got an audit on the plan as well for, for this year, so twenty-five, twenty-six, to look at the, the schools' improvement plan process centrally within children's services. So we've, you know, we keep adding on the audits to, for the key areas, so we are picking that up as well.
Thank you for that. And thank you, Linda, for that. The recommendation at the moment is the Audit and Standards Committee is recommended to note the content of the report and the opinion of the senior finance manager. And that's with the assurances that we've asked for at this meeting to then come back late in January, for January's meeting. Thank you for that, thank you, Linda. Right, we'll move on to item seven, which is information management, information commissioner's office freedom of information audit actions update. That's a bit of a mouthful. Presenting officer is Leon Kaplan, are you, and you, oh right, oh. Give him a minute for a handover. So I'm going to hand over to Leon and Dave Hollis, thank you very much, when you're ready.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, this was going to be presented by Sarah Green, who's the report author, but unfortunately she's not well today. So I'm grateful to Leon for stepping in to provide any detailed information that might arise out of the questions if I, I'm not aware of them. And I will give the, the general update. So this is a report following the consensual audit that we had with the information commissioner's office in relation to FOIs. There were a number of recommendations, most of which were completed and reported to this committee before. This is an update on the two outstanding actions that were there in the recommendation and where we're at with those. So the update is, is that although some progress has been made, they've not yet been concluded. They are matters that are interlinked, so they were to look at the staffing levels within the service in relation to FOIs, but also to look at the implementation of a case management system. So I'll take them together because they are, they are interlinked. So whilst it would be easy in one respect just to employ more people to undertake FOIs, there is of course cost implications to that. Cost implications at the time when the council has, you know, overspends within year and savings to find for the future year. And actually, if we were to take additional resource into this service, it would mean savings or prioritising from other services, which also have statutory requirements that which this does. So what we need to do is make sure that we've got the right operating model for the service as a whole, which is a combination of staffing levels, but also the technological investment that it needs to be able to operate as efficiently as possible with the staffing that it has. So what we have started to look at is a case management system. As the report says, we went out to procure, but the proprietary systems out there were prohibitively expensive for what the council could afford at the moment. So we've started to invest in looking using the Microsoft suite of tools that we have and have looked to develop a power app. That's been done by the council's internal IT team and progress has been made to that and it has been developed. It's now into testing phase, so we're about to start testing that. What we are going to do alongside that is also look at the, the case management system, the CRM that is used by customer services, to actually work out whether that is the best solution for the service or whether continuing to develop and implement the power app is the best solution. So we're hoping to do those alongside each other so that we can work out what the best solution is. But they are hopeful that they will give us greater efficiency, particularly with things like workflows and the use of Copilot and AI to start to prepare draft documentation to be able to get much more efficient use of the resource that we have within the team. The report does mention some recommendations that we had over an operating model that PWC did. That report is now a couple of years old and of course we've moved on a little bit since then. One of the things we've started to look at bringing that in, I, I will, I, I will confess that that's probably not been as quick as it might have been. That's partly because the information management team moved from a different area of the council into my area a couple of years ago. Uh, and since then, what we've looked to do is recruit, and you all know that Lindsay has joined as the Assistant Director for Democracy, Information and Governance. Um, she is now got responsibility for this team and is starting to look at this and how we implement the, the correct operating model. What we also want to do is make sure that this aligns to the future Sheffield work because a lot of this will be there. So there will be things like, um, the customer engagement element of future Sheffield. And Lindsay and I are meeting with the future Sheffield teams. We're meeting with Catherine, who is the Assistant Director that's leading on it and representative from PWC are engaged with the future Sheffield things to make sure that what the operating model is correctly aligned to is that future Sheffield. So that's ongoing work. So this is a bit of an update, so it's work in progress. Progress has been made, but we're not there yet with both of these. But we, that's because we want to make sure that they, they are the right solutions for the ongoing, um, service. What we will do is look at to see if we need any, uh, resourcing on an interim basis in the meantime, to while we look to deliver that operating model and the correct resourcing. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Matt?
Yeah, it's probably the only, like standout question is when do we expect the final two ones to be marked as complete? On, is there a time, uh, date of completion that we expect?
Um, without wanting to hang myself if we get this wrong, um, I'd hope by the new financial year that we, we, we will at least know what we're going to be implementing, even if it's not fully implemented. So, but by April next, next year.
Riff?
Thank you for that, David. You've answered quite a lot of my questions already, Paul. So a bit frustrating, I can't ask them, but nevertheless. Uh, just, uh, in regards to risk, uh, I know we have a risk register. Where, where does this issue sit on the council's risk register?
So there are, there is a risk register, uh, there's my internal risk register and there's one that's there that doesn't actually have this as a, its own risk, but some of the consequences from not having implemented this around that sit on that risk register. So they are reported.
Thank you. Um, and in regards to governance then, who is ultimately accountable for any complaints failures if deadlines are missed? And how is accountability enforced at senior leadership level?
Um, that's an interesting question. Well, I would say me, because this is with me, but of course there are all them people above me, so. Um, but, you know, I'm the director responsible, so it's, it's with me.
Thank you. And I think you may have answered this, but I might have missed it, just, so I'll ask it anyway. Beyond resourcing, um, what proactive measures, um, are being implemented to reduce, uh, FY demands and mitigate long-term compliance risk?
So part of that is looking at what information we publish and our open data, because actually if the information's already out there, um, that, that, that's there. Um, the other things is to actually be ready, um, when we know that we are going to get things that might give high demand for FY and look at how we can proactively publish and make the information available so that actually we're not creating that demand. Um, I wouldn't say we're there yet, but those are the things that we need to be starting to think about. Leon, I don't know if there's anything you want to, to add in relation to that?
I would add or, uh, confirm that we have a commitment to open data, to be, to progressively publish more environmental information each year as the regulations require. Freedom of information has its own publication scheme that the authority has adopted, proactive dissemination of information. Uh, the new procurement act twenty twenty-three comes with a raft of new transparency and we're, uh, uh, ensuring that we are meeting those, uh, requirements. The local government, uh, transparency code twenty fifteen, uh, is a set of requirements that we are required to publish quarterly and annually. We're doing that. We have a hundred and twenty-one data sets in the public domain. We're trying to grow that so that citizens can have access for themselves to this data. Some of our services are studying the pattern of, uh, FY and EIR requests, parking services and highways maintenance in particular. So, uh, we have published eight data sets for highways maintenance on the state of the roads, potholes, compensation, um, paid, streetlights. Our contractor Amy has been very cooperative with us in discharging that. Similarly, services like parking are also, uh, publishing in advance. I couldn't say that it is leading, it's diminishing the requests, the appetite of the public increases with eating. We are currently on target to, uh, log the highest number of requests in seven years. Been a slow, um, uh, ascent out of the pandemic. So, uh, as much as we try to anticipate, um, we live in a world of high expectation from customers, from citizens. And data is the new currency, so, uh, we will do our best. And we welcome any, uh, improvements or suggestions that members have. Thank you.
Thank you Leon, that was very comprehensive. However, I just want to pick up on some of the, some of the items, uh, you've said there. So there's a number of data sets already published on highways maintenance, as you've said. And one particular thing you've said there was that Amy is very cooperative. However, at the last full council meeting, I, uh, raised a question to one of my very favourite councillors, which is the Chair of the Wasting Streets in Committee, now known as Environmental Services, uh, particularly about Amy publishing data, especially given that a question, I think it was to councillor Dyer, uh, Dwyer, sorry, or it might have been to somebody else, an answer was given that, um, said that Amy published a hundred percent of their figures or, or data. And I would say, and I suggested Amy were being economical with the truth. And again, I would say Amy are actually being economical with the truth. Um, so the question really here is my constituents in Nether End and Shallow are hungry. They want data and they want to explore that data to hold the council to account. But they can't access that data because it's, in my opinion, being withheld. But, um, in others, it's just not being shared. So the question is, where can my people get access to this data? And will yourselves and David, uh, commit to releasing, um, more and more data, uh, at what percentage levels, uh, as we, as we move forward in the next twelve to twenty-four months?
Uh, I'm, uh, happy to, uh, look into that further. All I can, what I can say with those environmental information requests that are most, uh, common and that we are dependent upon Amy for the information. We have a cycle of publication with them. They are on our, um, OCGIS. It's, um, geographical information systems website. It's categorised. Um, I'd, uh, ask that you look at that data set in the first instance and say what you, um, think is missing. We, we're reactive, we, we're response driven. And, uh, Amy, the streets ahead programme is a massive programme. Uh, we, just one request for road sweeping, um, uh, patterns, cycles, timetables, uh, elicited fifty thousand lines of data that we had to boil down to seven, uh, thousand, uh, to make any kind of coherent response. So I think we, with respect, uh, there's a certain pragmatism that we, 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 we need to mutually define, uh, to try and get what's, uh, realistic in, uh, uh, for your constituents.
That's fine. Um, I mean, the question was, uh, raised around, um, publishing ward level enforcement trackers showing FPNs, prosecutions, cost records, uh, fly tipping hotspots, such as that. Then if you, the question is available online, um, at the last full council meeting, it's on page eighteen, it's question one, uh, directed to the Chair of the Environmental Services and Regulation Policy Committee.
I think we can take away and look at the possibility of that. What I, what I would say in relation to your opening part of the question about the commitment to review how much we can publish, what I would say is that once we get the, um, case management system in place, that will give us the, the intelligence of the types of questions that are coming through and the regularity in the areas for us to be able to better target what needs to be published in advance. So I think let's get the target operating model in place, let's get the case management system in place. And then we can start to look at what intelligence that feeds out to us about where we can proactively then publish.
Thank you. Yeah, thank, thank you for that. I, I don't see the question, one of the things I was going to say is one of the questions that has been raised, uh, by people is, yeah, it'd be good to have a data dashboard that councillors would have because, you know, what we're really concerned about is when a work's happening and what, what frequency in the, in the future, that, that, um, and, and some ease of the accessible information about when road sweeping is likely to happen because it's usually on a cyclical basis at a certain time. And also, um, there's some of the maps about when gritting and, and what the priorities for gritting and that sort of thing are. Because there is a potential for information overload. One of the questions I wanted, I, I want to ask was, talking about freedom of information requests, one of the things, um, I've had raised with me is that you'd prefer that councillors don't go down the freedom of information route, they go down other routes so that they're not clogging up the system. Because the freedom of information route is for members of the public to use and for councillors to use differently. Can you just talk us through that a little bit, how you would prefer us to go down that route and, and the, because obviously on the basis that if you're giving us information that, that we're able to disperse that information, not to hold it in our own sweet little heads or on our computers?
Yeah, so, um, what I would say is that councillors do have the right to make FY requests, but we would prefer that you just come direct to the relevant service. So the, the Member Officer Protocol covers this and says that members can for their own, for their purposes as a councillor, rather than for their own personal purposes, but for, to enable for their role as a councillor, which includes requesting information on behalf of constituents for where that's relevant. Go direct to the relevant head of service in the service. And if you just write to them or email them for that information saying what, what, what you need and why you need it, then they should respond to that and not require a freedom of information request to be put in.
Laura?
Yes, thank you David, and I would do that. It's more work for me, but I certainly wouldn't encourage constituents to go down that lengthy route. Um, if I could do the work for them, um, but that's just what I would do because I think they elect us to do a job for them, not to have to do it for themselves. Thank you.
Yes, I, I, I wouldn't expect constituents to just use a councillor as a proxy for an FY and just to, to put an information request in. But where you need that information in relation to casework, then you, you don't need, you don't do it as, um, an FY. What you do is just write to the service. Or if, or if you're dealing with matters in your constituency and you want information about a particular service, then even if it's not being requested by constituent, you can write to the relevant service to request that.
One of, one of the things that would improve is there are certain pieces of information that people, the public could, you know, would, could potentially be more easily available on some sort of dashboard part of the website that would cut out all the, all the bureaucracy of it all, you know, as I was saying, things like gritty streets, easily find what level of gritting streets are, uh, when, you know, something about when, when, when certain roads are going to be resurfaced. If it's easily accessible within, on the website, we can point people to that. Because they're the sort of things that people would like to know if it's coming up in the next three, six months or whatever, or, or how soon or the relevant timescale, which potentially could cut out a lot of the, the bureaucracy around, around it all of people and to find is, you know, it's almost like a section of the website saying, find out when, and then it'll have some very basic categories of what, the stuff that we as councillors are asked all the time when things are going to be done, that we would be able to point to people quite easily to say, go to here, this will tell you this sort of stuff. If it's not been done and they're saying, saying it's going to be done, let me know then, rather than clogging up your systems, rather than clogging up potentially our systems by having to find out whether some things, you know, something's been delayed for a very particular reason or whatever. You know, so there are, there should be some simple, you know, you know, the week to separate from the shaft that we can, that we can find, that we can easily be able to point to members of the public, which would make everybody's life a bit easier, I would, I would suggest.
So I, what I, what I will do is I'll pick up with Richard there, who's the running director about what information we can make available. Members' casework as well, the CRM is going to be used for that. If we can get more data and intelligence through that about what the regular requests are, again, we can use that to look and say, what's regularly coming through there? Can we look to proactively make this information available? So yeah, on the specifics about the highway stuff, I'll pick that up with, with Richard.
Laura?
And just to remind members who might not be aware of it, there is, um, uh, an Amy, um, person attached to each lack who gives us all the information in advance and it's very responsive. Um, Adrian's very responsive in Manor Castle to everything we want to know, so.
The only thing I'm saying that is just it's, they're sending this information, I'm picking it up. And then it's sometimes it's easier if you're able to say, well, actually that is easily accessible there, rather than me, you know, I mean, I don't mind digging through some of the stuff they may be asked about specific, specific site that we can see and they say, well, that hasn't been done when they said it was going to be done. That does happen, whether, you know, all sorts of other factors get into play, but yeah.
Thank you Chair. Just to say that beyond, and broader than highways, I think we'll start to see much more information being available to the public as part of customer experience work that's happening. So we're really thinking about what our customers and our citizens need from us as a council, what information we can provide to them in a more proactive and responsive way. So one example of that would be for housing repairs. And actually, we can provide that information in better ways than have people having to wait in front of the council and thinking of actually what's the best way we can provide the information for customers. And equally, if we can provide a customer portal that people can log into and see that sort of information that's relevant for them and the requests that they've had and their council tax bill and all those sorts of things. and the requests that they've had and their council tax bill and all those sorts of things, that's our aim, is to put all of that information at their fingertips, rather than having to call or email or message someone to get hold of that information. So part of the drive to improve our customer experience is to be able to help people to help themselves and have access to their data themselves.
No, no, thank you for that. No, because one of the things I'm concerned about is people who have very particular problems, particular issues that aren't being dealt with, rather than a general, this street's going to be fixed on, or it's going to be resurfaced on the week beginning the first of November, weather permitting, that sort of thing. Um it's this whether somebody's got a particular issue that I find is much more useful to lots of members of the public, because it's something that isn't necessarily going to be easily find outable or actionable, or it's something we've just got to chivvy up officers about.
I see no more questions on that. Um the Audit and Standards Committee has recommended to note the content of the report and the update. And we look forward to our case management system coming further in fruition in the future. Thank you very much. I'll move on to item eight, there are, which is there are no public petitions, questions and petitions have been submitted. And then item nine, the work programme, I'll hand over to Philip Abadat to introduce this item.
Thank you, Chair. The work programme for twenty twenty five, twenty six is in your agenda pack from page fifty one onwards. There's one change to note since the agenda pack was published. Um KPMG have confirmed they're bringing another report to the November meeting of this committee. This report will be the draft ISA two sixty report and KPMG will update members on the progress of the audit to date. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I see no questions. Standards Committee is committed, is recommended to approve the work programme uh with the additional um item. I'll move on to item ten, which is the date of next meeting. Next meeting of the committee will be held on the twentieth of November twenty twenty five at five PM. Thank you very much. Thank you for that.